I would like to call to order the City Council meeting for the City of Manona for Monday, May 2nd, 2016. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Alder Bussie.
Here.
Alder Wood.
Here.
Alder Spate.
Here.
Alder O'Connor.
Here.
Alder Kitzler.
Here.
Alder Holmquist.
Here.
Mayor Miller.
Here. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And at the outset, I would like to officially welcome Alder Kitzler for the beginning of his 39-year run. So we can all say we were here when it all started. Welcome, Andrew.
Thank you.
And thanks for doing it. As the -- I would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes of the April 18th and April 19th. Putting together council meeting. This is motion second. Corrections, deletions, or additions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes have been approved. We have two citizens here for the appearances section. First, we have Rob Calada, 4402 Outlook Street, who would like to address the council regarding the Schluter Channel assessment. I would note, Rob spoke earlier this evening for Personnel and Finance, at which recommended assessment was upheld at Personnel and Finance. Welcome, Rob.
Thank you. So I want to address the assessment schedule for the dredging of the Schluter Park Channel. Just a little history. This started in the Public Works -- that's right, the Public Works Department.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. The Public Works -- I'm sorry, I don't remember all the names. Started in the Public Works Department a few months ago, and they used an assessment schedule using a division of 70 percent of the dredging cost to the -- what is it? 70 percent to the city, to the residents, and 30 percent to the city. And they used an adjusted frontage method for the calculation of the frontage, which meant that no citizen could pay less than 50 feet, and no resident for more than 100. So it was the 70/30 split and the adjusted frontage. So we presented arguments that the majority of the material that was to be removed from the park was actually soil that ran off from the Schluter Beach Park. We presented that to Public Works, we presented that to Finance, we presented that to City Council. All of those groups found the data we presented very compelling, and when we went back to Public Works, they adjusted their original calculation from the 70/30 split to a 90/10 split now to reflect the 90 percent of the material that is the runoff from the city parks. We are quite happy about that. But in that assessment, then, the Public Works Department lost the adjusted frontage calculation that they had previously approved, that the mayor had supported in the past, and that was used in the Bell Isle dredging. So what the Public Works -- and the explanation that they gave to us for not including that adjusted frontage method is that they didn't think that it was necessary. So I did not find that a very compelling argument. So on the front page of what you have is what the Public Works Committee has approved, and on the last page, which is alternative two, is simply instead of using the actual frontage method for the division of the dollars between the affected residents, it uses the adjusted footage calculation, which is no less than 50 and no more than 100. This is what's been used in the past for Bell Isle. I simply ask that you modify the assessment schedule to use an adjusted frontage calculation. It costs absolutely zero dollars to the city, and all it does is more evenly distribute the costs to the adjacent property owners and keeps the frontage calculation in line with previous dredging projects. Thank you. I'll answer any questions if you have them.
Questions of Mr. Calada? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have new resident, Carrie Rogers of 1406 Nishishin Trail, would like to speak for informational purposes regarding the property at 4609 Tonewatha Trail and the use of their boat hoist. Welcome, Carrie.
Thank you.
Welcome to Manona.
Yeah, I'm on Nishishin Trail, Bell Isle, over there, but I'm speaking on behalf of my parents. They're at 4555 Winnequa. They moved there a year and a half ago, and their neighbors moved in a little bit after them. They're at the yellow and orange house by the boat lift on Tonewatha, and this is the second year they have placed a lift directly into the water without a pier. And as our understanding, a while ago with previous owners, there were cases that actually went to court that said that they couldn't do that, and that's the reason why I think the previous owner had sold the home. So we went to the DNR last year, and Wendy Pike at the DNR let us know that they cannot do that without a permit from the DNR, which they said -- they actually told Wendy that they had it, when in fact they just, they don't have one. And then they only have seven feet of frontage as well. So we've got pictures of the placement. It's almost right next to my parents' pier. It's in the way of swimming and getting the boats out and everything. And we tried to civilly figure this out by moving their structure over, but they said the City of Manona said that was their property, they wouldn't be able to move it into the water over there. So they kind of just left it on an angle. It was my parents' property. And we do have a lot of backing from a lot of the homeowners. So we're just hoping we don't have to go to court again, because we just don't want to go that way. So I didn't know if there was a way the city could help us deal with this first before going through litigation. And I did contact the DNR again this year, but they are super swamped, and I got a reply through email right away saying, "We're swamped, we can't get back to you." Wendy Pike's voice message is just, it's just full. You can't even leave a message there, so I'm guessing the DNR won't be able to handle something like this. That, I mean, it's not really harming anyone, so it's not a priority, I'm assuming, to them right now until the end of the summer, same as last year.
Did the neighbors place a boat on the hoist last year?
Yeah.
A pontoon boat, or a speedboat?
A pontoon.
Or pontoon boat?
Yep.
And how did that go?
He climbs over the rocks into the water, and then climbs up his lift and gets on his boat.
So is everyone familiar where this property is? It's what I affectionately call the Taco Bell House. It's the Spanish-looking home at the boat landing.
He came to Park Board a couple of years ago and wanted to buy frontage, right, from --
I think that was the previous owner that had wanted to do that.
Oh, was it? This was like within the last year or two.
That was Gunn.
With stickers or --
Gunn and Libby, and they sold to this current owner.
So they did sell to the -- so this is a new one?
Yeah. And I spoke to the realtor that sold the house, and they let the new owners know that they couldn't do any of this. So they were in the know when they bought the home.
Alder Bussie?
You said it's 4609 or 4607?
I think it's '07.
'07, yeah.
So although this isn't on the agenda, you know, we can have a dialogue in terms of clarification. And the best, being a repairian and having gone through some of these, and unfortunately this is rising again, I do not think this falls under the jurisdiction of the city, because it's truly a repairian issue in that the waters of the state are owned by the citizens of the state. So unfortunately, in the near term, it is truly a DNR issue. The one thing I would be willing, on behalf of the city, and I've talked to April, is we might have just not much of a bigger stick than you, but a little bit bigger stick in terms of getting to Wendy. We are attending the Clean Lakes Alliance breakfast tomorrow. A lot of these people may be at that, and so we'll kind of keep an eye out. And we can -- I would offer the city staff to at least make the inquiry in terms of before something gets a little too heated in the neighborhood, because this has been an ongoing -- and I have no idea why the city ever allowed zoning of seven feet or 10 feet. It's unfortunate. No one's ever been able to come. I'd hoped the neighbors could work things out. Neighbors have been unable to work things out, so I think we just have to defer to state jurisdiction on it.
Okay.
You seem to have the state's position, but someone may or may not be listening to the state, so I think that's the best unless somebody I looked up.
The -- their lots only, what, 10-foot wide? If there were a pier connecting their land to this, would that cause you problems?
Um, yes, they need a seven-foot set back from the property.
I understand that, but if, let's just assume there was one. What sort of problems would that cause your parents?
Um, I think just the value that, I mean, if my parents could have bought that home, they would have and put a pier on there. So that's a big issue with my parents, as well as all their neighbors, that their houses assessed a lot lower than the rest of the homes on the lake, because they don't have that luxury like other people do.
Mm-hmm.
And the angle of it, I mean, it's just in the way of just, if they wanted to go swimming off their pier.
Okay.
Did anyone attend? This came up three years ago, as Alder O'Connor noted. Alder Spate?
I wanted to offer that I had put forth the idea at a Parks Committee meeting that we might consider, would the city or would the Parks Board be willing to propose, you know, selling off a little triangle of land to create a more whole lakefront lot? And, you know, the Parks Board reacted very negatively to that idea, though it seemed to me the only reasonable way to address the only thing that could be done, but it just doesn't seem like there's an openness to that, because it is the precedent of selling city land, which is in the public trust for Parks land.
Especially waterfront.
Yeah.
So revered. Okay. Any further questions or clarification? So we will try to follow up.
Okay.
Not that we have a lot more questions.
Yeah, if you can get ahold of Wendy, that would be, that would be great.
All right. Thank you very much. There's no one else for appearances section, so I declare the appearances section officially closed. There's no unfinished business this evening on the Item 6, New Business, 6A. Hold up. Let me read the consent agenda. Item F, we have four different approvals of applications for operators' licenses. I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda applications. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Licenses have been approved. Item G, unfinished business, A, consideration of resolution 16-4-2096, approving the installation of a neon sign at City Hall for 98.7 WVMO. The voice of Manona, Alder O'Connor.
I'd like to move to table this. We're working on some alternative suggestions.
Motion to table, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor of tabling this item say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item two, new business, 2A, consideration of ordinance 5-16-678, amending Section 13-2-1 of Code of Ordinances Regarding Flood Plane and Shoreland Wetland Zoning, brought forth by the City Planner, Ms. Reichert.
This is regarding an ordinance update for the flood plane and shoreline wetland zoning code. The city received the DNR letter enclosed in your packets notifying us that a new flood insurance study is in effect. No changes with the new flood insurance study have impacted any of Manona's flood elevations or regulations in any way. The revisions instead come from updated stream studies in the Lower Wisconsin watershed. We still do need to update the flood insurance study, because the old one is now invalid for any flood plane decisions. The DNR determined that this could be done administratively by city staff, but after consulting with our attorney, he advised us that we still follow the full ordinance update process. So we did the required legal notifications in the newspaper, and Plan Commission has reviewed and recommended approval of this to council.
Alder Bussie?
Uh, move to suspend rules and take this item out of order.
Motion to suspend rules, take this out of order. There is a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second for approval. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thanks.
Thank you very much, Sonia. Item 6B is consideration of resolution 16-5-2098, awarding of a bid for the 2016 street micro-surfacing project, brought forth by the Public Works Committee. I will note, earlier this evening, at Personnel and Finance, this was approved. Mr. Stefani?
Thank you, Mayor. In your packet, you have the resolution fiscal note and the bid information for this bid. Our capital budget for this year includes $275,000 for street improvements. We received bids on April 8th from two contractors to complete the micro-surfacing work that was struck in Irwin and Farner. Farner Asphalt Sealers provided the low base bid of $221,428.2 for this work. The Public Works Committee will consider this at our May 4 meeting this coming Wednesday as well. So I'm looking for two reads on this tonight. First read, the second read will be on May 16th. Notification letters to our residents, we'll go out within the next two weeks notifying them of the work.
I stand corrected. As noted, at Personnel and Finance, this was approved with a friendly amendment that, based upon approval of Public Works' recommendation, Personnel and Finance approved it. Any questions of Mr. Stefani? Okay. Item 2C is consideration of resolution 16-5-2099, the awarding of a bid for the 2016 street resurfacing project, brought forth by the Public Works Committee. As was the prior item, this was approved at Personnel and Finance, contending upon approval of Public Works. Mr. Stefani?
Thank you, Mayor. We received bids for this project on April 15th from three contractors. They were Wolf Paving, Pendolin, and Tri-County Paving. Wolf Paving provided the low base bid of $48,447.76. The Public Works Committee will be reviewing this topic as well at the May 4 meeting this Both of the projects that I have had for bid fall within our allotted amount of $275,000. We'll have a balance of $6,924. After this work is done, I intend to use that to do a little more road maintenance work later this summer. The bid summary information is also included in the packet, and this will be back for a second reading on May 16th.
Questions of Mr. Stefani? Yes. Alder Holmquist?
It looks as if we're not doing the alternate on this one, correct?
Correct. Yep. Both of them are for base bids only.
Further questions? Thank you, Mr. Stefani. Thanks, Dan. Item 2D, and you'll notice start for immediate action, is consideration of resolution 16-5-2100, a preliminary resolution declaring intent to exercise special assessment police powers under Section 66.0703 of the Wisconsin statutes in the City of Manona, Dane County, Wisconsin, for dredging work to Schluter Park Channel, brought forth by the Public Works Director. Is there a motion to suspend rules and take this item out of order?
So moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Is there? Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Why do you want this to be taken out of order?
This was recommended by City Attorney Cole. We already went through the review at two Public Works Committee meetings, two Finance meetings, two council meetings. The preliminary resolution needs to be passed prior to the start of the dredging work, which is scheduled to kick off in early June. So we'll have the preliminary resolution tonight. The public hearing and final resolution will be on May 16th at council. With the hopeful passing of that, we should be set according to state statutes prior to the work beginning, so.
And at Finance and Personnel, I asked you at the Public Works meeting about Alder Stolper's question. Could you share that for the council? What he asked the residents that were there that day?
Alderman Bussie asked if the residents wanted this work to continue, and given all the presentations, Mr. Stolper threw that question out to the committee, should we even do this work at all? The residents were in favor of continuing the work as requested or as bid, so I think, like I mentioned at Finance, I think the residents were trying to get the best bang for their buck. They were trying to do the best they could with the Public Works Committee, Finance, and the council.
That's your recollection also, Rob? Is this?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. There's a motion to suspend the rules, take this item out of order. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. Is there a motion for approval?
We got a vote on it.
Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor of suspending the rules and taking this item out of order, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Alder Spate?
I just wanted to say that I have spoken with a few of the other residents who aren't here tonight about the testimony that was made tonight and the request for changing this, and, you know, basically, this, you know, there's one resident that's going to bear the brunt of this cost, and the others are perfectly fine with that. However, I do know some of them have said that they would, you know, they'll be talking to Rob and, you know, try to make thing, you know, maybe help him out a little bit. But I would like for clarification to put into the record why we did what we did at the islands, because I do, you know, I have had a few people mention this to me, and so, and I'm not really clear on why we did do that special formulation of 50 minimum, 100 max at the islands, just for --
I think we'd have to go back through the minutes, but my recollection was just it was a matter of equity and a very contentious, oft-debated discussion, and there was withdrawal of one of the channels withdrew, and then those who came forth, and then it just came down in terms of the yin and yang of where it was. But I would want to officially defer to the minutes. Alder? I thought that was, we followed the ordinance? Or is --
There is a paragraph in the ordinance that allows council to come up with a different solution or different scenario, and --
The min-max isn't part of the resident. Just the 30/70 is the only, is the only official part.
Well, then I just want to state that, given the fact that the city is stepping up and paying 90 percent of this, I think that that is more than a, you know, recalibration of what is fair, and so I'm willing to support this as drafted.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Alder Holmquist?
Aye.
Alder Bussie?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Spate?
Aye.
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Alder Kitzler?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Rob. Thank you, Mr. Stefani. Item H is reports of committees, commissions, boards, mayor, et al. Mr. Stefani, is there anything you would care to share this evening? All right. Alder O'Connor?
No report.
Alder Spate?
No report.
Alder Wood?
No report.
City clerk? No elections.
No elections.
No report, Mayor.
Other than board of review was done?
Yeah, open book was done last Thursday and Friday. Many citizens came in, and there were some adjustments, but most assessments were sustained the way they were. And open, I'm sorry, board of review is June 2nd. Residents have the option to call City Hall and set up an appointment for that with me, and, but there were not, I have not received a lot of objection forms at this point.
Good. City Administrator Little?
I was gone all last week, so not much to report.
Welcome to Manona.
I am officially a resident now, so.
Officially a resident, so you too will be paying those taxes.
I will be a taxpayer. I am a taxpayer, so there you go.
That's good. Welcome.
Thank you.
We'll wait for the -- Alder Bussie?
There will be no Plan Commission meeting next Monday.
Alder Holmquist?
Public Works meeting this Wednesday at 6:30.
Alder Kitzler?
No report.
No report. One thing I would ask of Alder Kitzler and Alder Wood, several weeks ago, did an appeal for committee members, volunteer committee members, and had a strong outpouring of applicants. I would ask each committee head to please review, talk to Leah, if you would have Leah send to the appropriate Alders their committee. And specifically, there is an opening to replace you on the library. Were you on library board?
Yeah.
Sustainability.
Sustainability. And public.
There's an opening on library, and the Chair of Library would like to appoint someone, but I would like you to, I'm fine with that, but I would like you to have input in that before. So if you could just check the resumes of the applicants and see. From my point, yesterday, as cold as it was, but the Manona Farmers Market reopened. The mayor's office is open for business. But the fun part was that WVMO, we were able to do live broadcasts, which I guess I'll continue to do from 11 to noon. So if any residents or citizens have any questions of stump the mayor, or ask the mayor, if you could please go to mymanona.com and send me an email, and I'll try to address those. The office will be as it has been in the past. I'll be there every Sunday, except if it's awful weather, then I'm going to sleep in and when I'm on vacation. But we've had a really good turnout. We've got good vendors. We have more vendors than ever, and everything's good on that end. And somewhere along the line, we'll do another update. We're ahead of schedule on university year, and I've had a number of meetings on that, and wow, I just continue to be amazed, not knowing what any of the outcomes and metrics will be from the projects, but we truly have the full breadth and depth of the university. We hope to have the grand rollout, the official public rollout of university year in August, and the chancellor has expressed interest in participating, so I'm really hoping this is of benefit in a very large way for Manona. No updates on the development then, but things are great in Manona. Other than that, Personnel and Finance, I mentioned, as was expressed with the assessments, but there are a lot of houses being sold in Manona, and they are being sold at record highs, and the excuse the assessors have used in the past of not having comps, I think will not be the case. And if I was a betting person, I would think assessments are going to rise. So it'll be up to this august body to determine the mill rate in terms of what's going to happen. But earlier, Mark, I don't know if he shared that with you, but for the building, my God, there's a lot of building going on in Manona, and about 5 percent increase in -- Square footage? No. Equalized value?
No, no assessed value?
Permits?
It was 5 percent increase. From last year, so 5 percent increase in terms of building permits in the amount of expenditure, so it was a good thing. There's more money in this city, I guess, is the takeaway on that, so. That's it for me. We do have one appointment. She's back. Former Alder Thomas, Kathy Thomas, is recommended for the Plan Commission effective immediately. Former Alder Thomas, Kathy Thomas, is recommended for the Plan Commission effective immediately. Is there a motion for approval?
Move to approve. Move to approve. Second.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Take it away from the new guy.
I rescind my motion.
I did not hear, but, uh, excuse me, I was talking and interrupted. Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.